Alright, so it's one thirty and we'll go ahead and call this workshop the order. First item will do pledge allegiance.
The allegiance to the high of the United States of America and to the Republic for which the states one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for.
Okay, and then the next item will be discussion will be the capital reserve study and then you present it.
Yep, so Alex, if you wanna kinda take over and just maybe do a little introduction and then I know the board has some questions, but if you just kinda wanna give a synopsis of the report.
Okay, um, yeah, so my name is Alex Gould, I'm an engineer for Reserve Advisors. I was the engineer that came out and conducted the reserve study, met with Chelsea and then also did the property inspection. Um, it stated the last study that we had was ten years ago with you guys, so it it makes a little bit different or difficult to draw comparisons between the two since there's just been so much inflation and so many cost changes since then. But generally speaking, um, we came out, uh, was provided all of the documentation from Chelsea, which, uh, helped to come up with some costs and more so scheduling as far as where you guys have projects going on in the next five years. I I know after listening to the, um, the previous meeting about this, which I was not able to attend, I know a big focus for you guys is the first five years. Um, as opposed to, you know, necessarily trying to keep the whole thirty year, uh, window into, um, being looked at and I I have a recommendation if if we wanna talk about that when we get later on and we start asking questions that I think might be helpful with this moving forward. Um, so I'll I'll bring that up when the time comes. But yeah, so we, uh, went in and looked at the four funds that you guys have, General Pelican Preserve, Stony Brook and, um, Enterprise and um, I, you know, I I again, on most of these recommending changes from the previous studies, but it it was, it's hard to draw comparisons between them. Um, so I'm really just kinda looking at how they're already being funded now and, uh, continuing to move forward there. Um, the general fund, we obviously had a huge increase recommended there, but that primarily is due to the uh, near term projects that are being done there that just weren't planned in the previous study. Um, Pelican Preserve, um, I know we we did a a drop off here and I, from listening to the previous meeting, I know there was a concern here, so we can talk about that and see if there's anything as far as um, values that I was just looking at differently. Um, sometimes there can be differences as to how we're looking at stuff should be replaced versus, you know, maybe higher finishes and higher quality materials that the community would rather see, and so we can talk about that, maybe that's the discrepancy as to why we went down, but they feel like it should be higher than that. On the Stony Brook Reserve, um, I again, this one, we did an increase on there and then we have a decrease later on. Stony Brook is primarily driven by the road replacement, so um, that is, we can get into that one if there's more questions there, but I didn't hear so many concerns with Stony Brook um, as with the Pelican Preserve and the other ones, so we can get into that. Uh, and then the Enterprise Fund, um, this one is kind of being handled a little bit differently than how we would normally look at a reserve fund. Uh, just kind of the nature of how you guys are using this Enterprise Fund. I just went in and kinda looked at more, let's keep stable funding with what you guys are already doing here. Um, you know, we decreased it to a million, uh, I just cuz I think you can do a million and still have ample amounts of money in that account based off of what I'm seeing and what we have for near term projects. Um, and like we said on this one, we're ending with a huge, huge ending balance of seventy six million dollars on that on that fund, um, but but again, it it kinda driven by the nature of how that fund seems to be used. And, uh, going through the actual report, any big items that I wanna touch on, um, I I I guess what I what I'll hit on is anything that kinda caught me off guard. Um, obviously, there's some questions that were brought up about the asphalt pavement quantities. And I I would like to talk about that cuz I I was a little bit confused on that and I was basing my quantities partially off of uh, the previous report, Chelsea had told me to retake a look at those numbers and um, using the information I had, it was hard for me to see where we were getting the extra quantity from, but it 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 must just be a misunderstanding that we have on what exact pavement is owned by the community, so we can absolutely take a look at these quantities again. And kinda what I'm doing now is just hitting on some questions that I heard brought up, um, in that, in that previous meeting. I know concrete curbs and gutters were brought up as a question as to what we're talking about here. And it is partial replacement, so it's it's just giving an allowance that is to be replaced when road repaving happens. Um, we would never recommend that you would do all of them in one shot or even all of them in a thirty year period. Going down through the rest of these, I know street signage on the general fund was brought up and I'd like to talk about that more. Um, because I I I believe again on my part, that was misunderstanding of what the ownership on street signage was. I'm sorry, um, so I I'd like to talk about that, uh, if if you guys have some more clarification that we can move forward with on that. Everything else in general, uh, uh, to me was was pretty straightforward. Um, again, before getting into actual questions, I know a question about storm conveyance pipes was brought up in the previous meeting. And, uh, somebody kinda hit on the fact that the reason why we weren't considering it was because it's just outside the purview of the study. And, um, I kinda to touch on that right now. Uh, we put an eighty-five year useful life on elements like that and essentially short of having information being told that there's premature uh, deterioration going on, um, you know, like through inspections and just out there and noticing problems. We would not start bringing in replacement of that until years seventy, seventy-five. Um, we we would start bringing in a partial phase of that. Um, so it 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 was just exactly, I I don't know who it was that said that, but it was exactly that, it's just for us right now, we believe outside the purview. Um, but if if there's stuff that you guys know, uh, no problem accelerating anything, that's always would rather do that than than let stuff wait for too long. And, um, I I I again, that that's kinda the rest of my spiel, I I seems like you guys had more questions and I maybe it'd be better use if we just kinda went into any questions that you guys had. Um, unless there's anything else that you would like me to hit on.
We can do that, um, just Doug did join, so if you guys could do a motion to allow him to be remote.
Have a motion in a second on, please say aye.
So, um he's here, if you guys have any specific questions, if you wanna go page by page or got until three o'clock until you guys, uh, next regularly scheduled meeting starts.
I think we'll probably bring it out real quick.
So either we can do that or we wanna do line by line item, if you don't have any questions, we just go to the next. Doesn't matter to me, Bob, you have a preference?
Oh, I do not, I don't have that many questions.
Yeah, okay, so then we just go with what we have.
Cuz I think we're gonna get them.
Do you wanna, do you wanna start since you have most of it and then?
Yeah, this is Ed Tinkle, uh, one of the things I wanna make sure I understand is, uh, quite familiar with capital reserve studies, but this one kinda threw me for a loop the way it's set. I'm sorry, I am on the general reserve expenditure, the first spreadsheet, page one of six. One of six and two of six, I guess. Eighteen, eighteen, what? There's no number on the. Anyway, starting out with forty-six thousand, I think you alluded to it, forty-six thousand square yards of asphalt pavement. Then you immediately in the next two lines, take that and split it up, fourteen thousand asphalt pavement mill and overlay soccer drive. And then you've got thirty-one thousand two hundred, I'm assuming that's everything but soccer drive, correct?
Correct, and again, from what my understanding is correct, but I I think we might be wrong on that, so, but that that is correct.
Okay, what I'm thinking is happening, if you were using the twenty-ten report, we sold off or get transferred to the county, uh, three major roads about five years ago. And by my calculations, and they're pretty rough, I came up with maximum of the roads we have remaining of about twenty-one thousand square yards. Left.
So Alex.
So I think the big thing is rather than getting into the nitpicking, I think what we need to do is just to make sure that you have a listing of the roads that we own and are responsible for and that should be included in the plan. The other thing is you need to be aware is at the time we did the turnover, these belong to the developer. And one of the deals of the turnover is, Tony, correct me if I'm wrong, but the developer had to resurface all of these, mill and resurface.
So a number of those were brought up to current standards.
So yeah, they were brought up to current standards, so a lot of those will probably have a twenty-two to twenty-five year add-on from four or five years ago, and the only issue would be is if we have any damage that would accelerate putting them in at a earlier year on paving. But going back to the first one, uh, notwithstanding your exact how you arrived at it, I'm trying to figure out what you did once you had it. For example, you have forty-six thousand square yards of asphalt pavement. Then you show estimated first year twenty-twenty-four, useful life three to five, years remaining one, unit point seven, I don't know what the hell that means. What's a unit times a factor, is that, is this about, are you talking about a a cost unit?
Yeah, so the unit on that is is seventy cents a square yard, um, and so that's all that unit is, is that's just a cost per whatever unit we're using, correct?
How much is it?
Seven cents a square yard.
Okay, for patching.
Correct.
Okay, and then you've got thirty-two thousand two hundred, so I'm taking that seventy cents times forty-six, so or thirty-two thousand two hundred dollars. Then you go two point five percent, I don't know where that came from, but then you've got years twenty-twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven numbers, ninety-one thousand, eighty-four thousand, a hundred and twelve thousand. How did you get those numbers?
Um, so those numbers were pulled off of the, uh, CIP that I had, um, been looking at, and so it, this is where sometimes near term projects, um, kinda differ at at with reserve studies, you know, I'm sitting here and I'm saying this is a general approximately for patch repairs, you're gonna have seventy cents per square yard, but in reality, it seems like in the near term you're doing a project that's much higher than that. Um, so I kinda saying in the near term, this is what you're spending, but generally speaking for patch repairs, this is what should work moving forward.
So you're you're suggesting that we need to be prepared to spend ninety-one thousand in twenty-twenty-four on repair, patching?
Uh, I I I again, based off of the CIP that I had, that is what I pulled off of it, I and I could have misread it, uh, but that is, that is how I read it.
Yeah, and this is, that's probably where I have the problem, because if we have a, let's say a conservative eighteen year life left on those, all of those roads which were all improved and brought to standards, I would not expect to have any money budgeted to at least maybe twenty, thirty-five, somewhere out there, except for maybe routine annual repair and replacement, which is not usually a capital item.
Yeah, I mean, it's, yes, so if it were, if it was, if if I, if I was doing this, just my opinion solely, what it would be is, you know, let's say you did the repaving, it was, uh, twenty-twenty-two. So I would say, okay, every five years moving forward, you have an allotment for patch repairs, and then every twenty years, you have the full mill and overlay happening.
Now, something like that I could, I could handle.
That's kinda how we thought too.
I could, I could handle that. Okay, then the second one under, let's say we skip down to the fourteen thousand asphalt pavement mill and overlay, which is typical one inch, uh, grind and, uh, uh, replacement. I don't see anything, I see your dollar price, fourteen dollars and fifty cents a square yard. Uh, we could argue till the cows come home on that number, but, uh, I'm using a very similar number, so I'm not gonna argue with it. Uh, but I don't see anything all the way out to twenty-thirty-seven. Is that, you're basically saying that that has a life cycle out to that year, or do I go back to that first column that says estimated first year of the event forty-two, and that's where you would find that amount of money?
Uh, correct, yes.
Okay, 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 let's skip blacktop then from there on and just verify that you get the quantities correct. I now understand how you're doing that, let's jump down to concrete curbs and gutters. Now, the way, the way we do it in our community where I got thirteen miles of roads, every year we do certain road repairs, we do the curbs and gutters simultaneously. Here, we're going to have a problem why we can't do that. We have a road that we gave away, but the repair of the road and the curbs and gutters due to landscaping is going to be on our nickel. And that twenty-two hundred and seventy feet, looks like to me you arbitrarily took a ten percent factor for estimating that if we have twenty-two thousand seven hundred lineal feet, we're gonna have twenty-two hundred and seventy of it that needs to be replaced, is that correct?
Yeah, it's essentially based on condition, so we generally go from ten to thirty percent with each event, just depending on how how bad the condition is and also if there's tree roots that are gonna cause problems.
I think on that one, I'm not probably not going to argue with you on the deal, but once you redo the lineal footage of the roads, I don't know how many miles of roads we've got, I could add it up here and figure it out, but, uh, obviously double that for both sides of the road. Uh, I think you're going to have far more than twenty-two hundred and seventy lineal feet to be, uh, projected out, uh, to to be fixed. And a lot of ours will not be done when the paving is done because we can't wait, the roads are being torn up by the trees. So that's that, that's that issue, again, we need a verification of the, uh, uh, the quantities more than anything.
Hold on, so then I I'll just jump this, and then so the unit, the twenty-five dollars for that, you think that's accurate?
We're budgeting forty in our community.
I think the last one we got here was around sixty, that's a huge difference.
It depends on your quantity, if you have a small quantity of curb and gutter, your price, your unit price is going to go through the roof. Because the contractor's picking up and moving.
What the unit price was for Avila, cuz that's current data. Since we just did it.
Yeah, I just thought that that was too low.
Yeah, and I s- and I skipped one also, that catch basin inspection and capital repairs. We have in our roads way more than twenty-six catch basins. I mean, many, many more. And I didn't know what you were doing there, because that's a part of the storm sewer system that I totally agree is a paving issue uh, and a, uh, item associated with the road. But I didn't know where that twenty-six came from, cuz I could probably count twenty-six just going down any one of a couple of streets. Yeah, so that that quantity needs to be checked out.
Wouldn't they be in the NPDEs report when that was the catch basins?
Well, you could have.
Yeah, and typically they do.
Yeah, you could have, but it it could also have catch basins that we have responsibility on or are, that are on roads that we don't have responsibility for. The other one, as you mentioned earlier, was the storm sewer system. By my estimates, we've got probably fifteen to eighteen, maybe twenty million dollars in storm sewers, concrete, uh, fifteen inch in diameter to, uh, ninety-six inch in diameter, none of which is on here, and I'm taking that you're going based upon seventy-five to a hundred year service life. It isn't gonna happen in this next thirty year period, is that correct?
I I I, that's the assumption I'm making as of right now, um, and 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 again, I you know, who's to say in two years, don't start looking into it and you find out that you have some issues, but as of right now, without having any documentation that there are substantial problems with collapses, that is the assumption I'm making, yes.
Okay, okay.
Um, now, I do have an allowance in here for the conveyance pipes in between the ponds. Um, so we have that being brought in, but the actual one on the streets. Uh, it's gonna be line item four point seven zero four.
Where?
Uh, four point seven zero four ponds, comma, conveyance pipes, inspections and capital repairs.
Okay, we we have about seventy-six ponds. And so I would assume there's going to be a minimum of seventy-six conveyance pipes and by definition in Gateway, all the conveyance pipes are forty-eight inch diameter. And they vary in length from, I'm gonna say a hundred feet to five hundred feet. That's a lot of pipe. How did you estimate that, that number?
Oh, the, uh, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah, that's a drop of the bucket what I think the actual price is.
And and I would, I would actually definitely agree with you on that, um, uh, really where that estimation comes from is just looking at communities that are of the similar size and what kind of cost they're incurring at this age with their pipes that are similar to this. Um, I I I totally agree with you that as time goes on, this number is gonna skyrocket. But that that that's, that's really what it's based on, and I, you know, I'll be completely honest with you, without doing a very in-depth analysis, it's difficult to come up with anything other than just comparative analysis, basically.
Okay, then the last one I had that was a big ticket item is street signs. Are they, are they under four point seven four oh?
Uh, no, so I I have four point seven four oh is solely monument signage, so I I I believe street and traffic signage for Gateway is something that we missed.
Okay, cuz we, our street signs probably are running, what, fifteen hundred bucks each?
Yes.
And I I hate to, I hate to even think of how many street signs we've got, uh, maybe two hundred, something like that? I have no idea.
So I talked to Chelsea about this because I was, I I think I said three hundred, right, around three hundred signs? And you think it's less? You know, you have the, you know it is?
Alls I know is, is because of the cost, it is a major ticket item. Because we're going with really fancy decorative signs and they run easily fifteen hundred dollars each. So that's a big ticket item and I can guarantee you, they sure don't last twenty years. With the combination of storms and our, uh, what what do I wanna say?
Driving skills.
Uh, do I don't wanna say driving skills, lack thereof, uh, they don't last long.
But the driving skills we get.
We get insurance sometimes if we catch them. Uh, but anyway, the big point is that's a lot of money on street signs. Regular signage, that's, and monuments is not that big a deal, we don't have that many of them, so. I think that pretty well covers, I see now what you're doing, you take your percentage and then you distribute it, but that very first one, that asphalt patch repair of ninety-one, eighty-four, a hundred and twelve, thirty-six, Christ, I could pave a lot of roads for that amount of money in the first next four years. And I don't, I think there's something missing there on those.
Forty-six thousand is not a good number, that's.
Yeah, and that's all based on the forty-six.
And everything cascades down except for the the curbs and gutters.
Laura, Laura got a number.
Yeah.
Uh, for Avila, the curb and gutter, the two foot was seventy-five dollars a linear foot. Three times.
How many lineal feet?
Hundred ninety.
There's your problem. Small quantity, yeah. Uh, that probably hit off very far on that kind of a volume. Bobby, that's everything I had that were the big ticket items that, uh, really on most capital reserves, those major items are the ones that'll burn you on your price.
Alex, are you making notes to, um, to reflect the the tweaks that need to be done to the report?
Yeah, so I'm gonna make notes and then at some point this evening or tomorrow, I'm gonna send an email just with anything that I have further questions on and then anything just confirming, so I I've I've got this for you.
Could we be sending you a, uh, some type of a map or a, uh, letter defining the roads that we actually have responsibility for, their lengths and widths and all that?
I'll email him the the roadways.
I had soccer drive, Commerce Lakes Drive East, Fairway Lakes, kind of a question mark, Eagle Point, Girl Scout and Devonshire, I think those are our only roads. I'm sorry.
I don't think Fairway Lakes is ours.
Well, that's why I said I had a question mark on that, but the issue, who's gonna take it?
Girl Scout is not ours yet, neither.
Not us yet.
Girl Scout's ours, isn't it?
No, still under WCI.
Is that one of them, fell through the cracks?
It's a straggler.
A little determination at the time, trying not to take it for a number of reasons, I went back to my old memory.
Okay, we're working on.
Okay, well, those are the only roads I had on my list of that I used to ca- calculate twenty-one thousand square yards.
I'll get that list out.
Alright.
Okay.
Do you want anything to add?
Not on that one.
Okay.
Do you have anything to add? Um, no, but just a general question. Whenever I've seen, um, reserve studies before and when it, when it comes down to the conclusion, it usually has a relatively stable number, like, you know, half a million dollars the first year, six hundred thousand the next year, maybe six hundred thousand the year after that, seven hundred thousand, that sort of thing, in usually becoming larger and larger as you get further and further down the road. But yours seem to go up and then they go down and up and down, um, to make, uh, decisions about budgeting based on that is kinda difficult, and I was wondering, is this, do you do the other type of studies also? Where in essence you say to us, you know, you need to budget this much in reserve this, this next year, et cetera, et cetera?
Uh, so so I I imagine what you're talking about is, uh, like within the past five years, for example, if we had a condominium, we would be saying for thirty years, you need to do five hundred thousand dollars. Um, what, that was a, that was an understanding with the, uh, Florida Department of Businesses that essentially set on reserve studies, you couldn't have uh, balloon payments and, uh, they included inflation as the definition of a balloon payment.
You could or could not.
You could not, so you had to show flat funding like that. Um, within the past three or four years now, um, they have now changed that to say that you can include inflation on that. So what I'm getting at here is the, these fluctuations, all it is is, uh, so I'm looking at the general funding plan right now, which I believe would be from what you guys are looking at, two pages down, um. I'm starting off at one point.
Alex, go to page one point two of your executive summary and I think it tells it all. What causes the problem, all of the expenditures of the major expenditures, you've got budgeted in the first three years. So that ability to take and have that more uniform expenditure or budgeting just is out the window because you have to collect so much cash to accomplish the first three or four years.
And 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 right, and that's why basically in all of these, you're seeing huge contributions out the onset, then once you get past those projects, you can drop back down to um, funding, but but again, all we're doing is we're just saying we're inflating at at three and a half percent on each of these, so uh, one point two million to one point two four two million is just inflationary increases, basically.
Okay, I'm just saying it makes it kinda difficult to explain to the taxpayer that we need this money now, but not six years from now, so it'll probably go down in six years and they just kinda roll their eyes and say, yeah, right, sure.
Right.
Yeah. So is there any way you could give us just a general idea?
Uh, well, I, I mean, I I I guess so, I I I guess I'm a little confused there as to as to what you're asking, um, be- because it it pretty much that's what we're doing, it's just you have these projects in the next five years that are, that are driving this. Um, you know, I I I mean, you know, how I could explain it is that once you get past these projects that need to be funded in the next five years, now you can drop off and you're, you're doing basically for the next twenty-six years stable funding of just inflationary increases moving forward. Um, but, you know, I mean, what I tell when I'm in front of an HOA and they ask me these questions, it's, it's at these, they have to be paid somehow, um, and you know, i- i- it's at a point where these projects have to be done in a, in a much smaller period of time with uh, also a much smaller period of time to collect the money for them. Um, and that that's kinda the best advice I can give there, cuz anything else I would change here would would i- i- it would either create a shortcoming in the near term or it would just create funding levels in the outer years that are so insane, it would be, it would be a waste of a reserve study. I don't know if that answers the question that you're asking.
Alex, I'd throw one out to try to answer maybe the Carol's, uh, deal that I've seen done before. Go to the page again, one point two executive summary, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six. Just make that one point two five million or one point two seven five million each year for years twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six. Then from twenty-seven to let's say maybe thirty or thirty-one, make it an even four eighty or something like that to where it's a constant number in four, five, six year groups. Uh, your only problem when you do that is some people are gonna come out, cuz I hear it all the time. You're collecting my money, I won't live that long and you're making me pay for the guy that's gonna live down the road.
Right.
And my argument is, is you're living now and you're using it now, so tough luck. Don't have any other thoughts?
Yeah, and I I I'll, I'll run that by, I I will tell you that with the inflationary environment that we've had recently, we used to do essentially what you're describing where we would say let's get flat funding that goes for a number of years. Um, but but because of the inflationary environment we're in, we've, we as a company have kinda gone away from that and we just say uh, we need, you just need to bite the bullet and and take the hit, I I'm, I'm amenable to the first three or four years, let's say, instead of one point two increasing, we can find a flat line that you know, you could hold steady for those three years, um, but in the outer years, our, our company stance would be that it Um, but in the outer years, our, our company stance would be that it, it just, it has to increase by inflationary growth moving forward. Um, and, and our argument.
Alex, I got a question for our attorney that will impact you. Tony, if, let's say that all of our questions were answered and this is the final document and Alex has got all the changes made and we're happy with that. And it comes out this chart on one point two executive for the general fund, contribution, reserve contributions, and it's showing these staggered amounts for the next umpteen years. What exposure do we have as a board that when it comes time next year or this year in May, that we start putting together our budget? That we now have a professional document that tells us for twenty twenty-four, that number that goes into the budget is one point two million? What do we do? Do we have to go with that number?
No, sir. You have the discretion to say, we've evaluated it, we understand the basis for it. And we're gonna make a determination, this is.
HOA, we can't do that. We gotta go with it.
This is how we're going to fund it. You know, you can, you can do, like you said, you had mentioned about having a larger number for a number of years, a lower number for a number of years.
The results of this report are not mandatory.
That's correct.
For us for budgeting.
That's correct.
Okay. Well, that's.
Yeah, that's only on, on the.
It's an excellent, it's an excellent planning tool.
Yeah.
And it's a great idea that y'all have it cuz it gives you a perspective on what might be needed.
Well, yeah, because you, you, you get the money right now set aside and somebody that's gonna live here for one year and skip, uh, they don't, they don't pay their proportion or per ride of share.
I understood. It's one of those, I think we've heard it before, the generational arguments and discussions.
Okay.
And then the other thing is, uh, the first three years, um, going back to this chart, uh, that we have in front of us here, um, uh, a million two, a million two forty-two, a million two eighty-five. Does, did that take into a effect? Or did you take into consideration the bond issue that we just did?
Um, I, I, I mean, as far as, when, when you said it, a- as far as what work has been done and has already been paid for?
Well, that was included in the bond issue, so now we have the money for that. I think the bond issue actually was on this coming, this last Monday. Or maybe it was this Monday. So, and it was.
Original series.
Right.
Um, so, so generally, we, we don't take that into account.
From the bond to lower the cost.
Right.
Okay.
In, in other words, did, did you consider that when you made these? Particularly in twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, it was a ten-year bond, or no, it was basically a ten-year program, but it was highly weighted in the first three years.
Yeah, to, to get money for these projects, um, I, so I, I will tell you, we, we generally don't take that into account. And so what we're saying is, you have this one point two million dollars. If you have funds that can be used to supplant, you know, a, a portion of that, that's fine. But we are usually just saying, you have one point two million dollars next year, you need to source that, whether it's through money from that or whether it's from the contributions, um, we, we don't usually consider that, no.
Okay, and then my final question is, generally, uh, I've always looked at reserve studies to basically say, at any given point, based on the size of your operation and all that sort of stuff, you should generally have this amount in reserve. So sorta like, um, a person would say, okay, it costs me ten thousand a month to live. I should generally have ten percent of that in a savings account somewhere. Just, just because, just in case stuff happens. Is that in your study also, or did I miss that?
Uh, so what, 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 what we're doing here, it, it's approaching that sort of from a different look, uh, point of view. And I'm gonna look at again, one of the funding plan pages, uh, that general funding plan, um. And what we are saying is, uh, so year twenty twenty-six is listed as a critical year. And so all of our calculations are based off of never allowing the reserve accounts to fall below twenty percent of that year's given expenditures. So it's a, a different way of approaching what, what you're talking about. So, um, and, and it, it's just, that's what we call this threshold funding, uh, process.
Okay, so if possible, for the next three years, if, if you could basically say, at any given time, this district should have, I don't know, pick a number, three million dollars in its reserve accounts for stuff, stuff that might happen. For, for any given reason. Um, is it possible to do that with your numbers or not?
Well, so, so we would stray away from that because, you know, we, we would make the, the argument that unpredictable stuff that comes up is not, is not really what reserves are for. Um, this is more for the predictable nature of stuff that needs to be replaced. Um, so that's why, like I was saying, as opposed to the, hey, I'm gonna say you'd ever go below a million dollars. Um, I'm just solely looking at the ratio of any given year to the amount of being spent that year.
Carol, I think, I think what hopeful, hopefully we can implement next year is an emergency fund.
Like retained earnings.
Yes. And, 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 and have it in that sense cuz I think Alex is trying to say this is more planned for projects and, and stuff. Whereas an emergency fund is that, oh gosh, something happened, bring a gate fund. Ian hit, I mean, we, we didn't budget for this, we, we have a. Yeah, unexpected expenditures. So I think that's something we can, and Alex is saying generally twenty, you, you said kinda twenty percent of the operational expenditures for that year?
Yeah, that's what we use, twenty percent.
Okay, for, for capital, for the capital side is the, the, I think the general number you're looking for. But that's gonna change every year because of how much we budget on the O and M side. So, and typically with a government, like your emergency fund would be three, three months worth that you should be able to, to handle three months' worth of your expenses, um, and float yourself if something were to happen.
Okay, but generally there isn't like a rule of thumb to say, if, 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 if your budget is two million dollars, you should have.
Sixty, ninety days.
Yes.
Yep, there's a rule, we just, we just.
Six hundred thousand dollars in your reserve account or your savings account or whatever name you wanna call it, at any given time.
There's a best management practices, but it's not a rule per se.
Our accountant told us.
What is the best management practices?
About three months, four months.
Yeah, our count told us three months, not counting capital reserves.
Yes.
Excluding capital reserves.
Correct.
So three months would be twenty-five percent of your budget? Basically.
Yeah.
When you're adopting your budget.
Yes.
Okay, so three months you should have.
That's a salty number. That's a salty.
Yes.
Well, sure it is.
Okay.
But one, one Ian will let you know how much, how good it was. Put a dent in it.
Okay, that's all I have.
Alright, so the items that I had, Ed touched it, which was the monuments and the signage, cuz I want a clarification of that. And same thing with the roads and then the cost of the, the, for the repair of the concrete curvings. So do you, we wanna take them, we'll do Pelican and then we'll do Stony Brook? That's how we're gonna do it? Okay, so we'll do Pelican and I'll start with Bob.
Go to that same page or that same.
Yeah, on the, uh, on the assumptions part of Pelican, and I guess I'm on page four point three-two. Uh, it says a boardwalk, a wood, wooden boardwalk at, uh, twelve thousand four hundred square feet and that it was, uh, replaced in twenty twenty-two. And I think there was a disconnect on what was done because the photo that references this boardwalk is the photo of something that is not a gateway asset, but a town center asset, and that is the here at our town center.
Yeah, that, that was actually a mistake on my part. I took that photo as a placeholder to, to put in as a note to myself to say that this is not the boardwalk and it, it, it slipped into my report. So I, I, that, I, I know that that is not the boardwalk that, that we are talking about. Um, and, um, I have that to be corrected when I send out the revised report.
All right, well, that's good news. Now, the, 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 the rest of that is, there's, there is a boardwalk on that we did replace last year and the year before that, we replaced the four bridges. So they're all four wooden bridges. Uh, and those numbers are all in the, uh, this reserve expenditure.
Oh, yes, so, so my twelve thousand four hundred square feet, it, it included all of the wood that I saw.
Okay, which is the four bridges and the, and the bulk of the, okay. So in as much as there right now, uh, we were looking at like a twenty-year minimum age and it didn't include the pilings. Did, uh, I don't know what time, point in time that the pilings will have to be replaced. But is that factored in or is this just the, the toppings, so to speak?
Uh, so on these two line items here, I'm gonna start off with six point zero nine four, or sorry, is it six or five? Um, six, which is the inspections and partial replacements. And so what that cost is, is deckboard replacement and, and a portion of structural replacement. Again, kinda with the curbs and gutters, it's, it's loosely an arbitrary number. Um, again, just based off of the percentage, so we'll say on the supports thirty to fifty percent, depending on how bad the conditions are. Um, to me, it, it looked in good enough condition that I went on the lower end. And then the actual boardwalk wood replacement, the line item above, um, it is including a higher percentage of, uh, piling replacements as well as the replacements of the handrails and the deckboards. Um, but we are never recommending in one shot, uh, every piling gets replaced.
Well, we just had the inspection that said they weren't even warranted and they are twenty years old. So that's what's prompting the question. In twenty more years, they're gonna be forty years old. And at that time, it might be appropriate to start doing, but the numbers are factored in here?
Yeah, and, and so like I said, so at.
The topic.
Yeah, and, and so at your event in twenty thirty-seven, I'm, like I said, we've included a approximately thirty percent piling replacement, um, uh, which it kinda just look at it more as an allowance and I can send you more of a breakdown of what that cost is. I would just have to have some time to go into that. Um, but yeah, to answer the question in short, piling replacement is, is considered in that unit cost.
Okay, very good. And we do, and we are talking about the right structures.
Yes.
Okay, fine. Uh, on the catch patients, I, I've gotta look at the number of catch patients that I've got too, because I think I'm greatly above the seventy-two number.
Well, and we've accepted new roads, so we just need to make sure that all of the roads and the accompanying catch rates.
Yeah, Palazzo.
Yeah.
Yeah, but they were already in our catch base, even though it was in Palazzo. Uh, so our catch base, and I, some, something tells me it's somewhere around two hundred and four, but I've got an actual number.
Higher than.
Yeah, yeah, a much higher than the seventy-four. And, uh, and I don't have any problem with the, with the rest of it, uh, the asphalt repairs are gonna be what the asphalt repairs are. That's, that was my only comments on the report. Yeah?
The light pole fixtures, is that, is that an effort, hundred and forty-six?
Well, we're still, you know, since Ian, we now have a.
Well, yeah, I know.
So I don't, I don't know.
I thought, I thought it was a little bit higher than that.
Well, the other part of this whole thing, when we talk about the light poles, is if we go with the FPL change, this becomes kinda moot. It won't be all right of it all. That's why I really didn't delve into it. Cuz I like what I'm hearing about the FPL change. I like it. And if we adopt that.
To be clear, we haven't touched Pel- Pelican with the FPL change.
I know.
But it's part of it. We.
It's an option, but we didn't, we didn't, we didn't add it.
This board has not chosen to convert to FPL in Pelican.
Okay, but we haven't chose to convert over here either, have we?
Yes. They, they, yeah, yeah, they're, they're working on the plan and we paid them to do the, the.
The design and the photo metrics.
Such a question for Bob.
But I, well, okay, before we leave that, I was of the opinion that Pelican was gonna have a number two on this.
Hell, we have, we did not include Pelican as part of the bigger picture.
Any reason why we didn't?
We didn't have more direction from that, from that standpoint.
Not that we wouldn't.
I think the issue is, you don't have the problems we have for the reason we're doing it.
Well, no, no, but, but we have problems too when we wanna get, we wanted to be under that same umbrella because if you're going to the deal with Gateway and it's a thousand poles and then Pelican comes in and another two hundred, you're gonna get a better number for twelve hundred than you will be for the thousandth. And then we come in a million, two hundred later. So I definitely want them included in that.
I think that's something we can take up after three o'clock and get a clear.
Okay, I was unaware of that. I never knew Pelican was excluded and I sat here through most of the discussion.
And Stony Brook wasn't included cuz they're already converted. And it was my understanding that this whole conversion, the whole project as part of the capital was because of the deterioration of Gateway Boulevard.
That's what we started, yeah.
Yeah.
We're, uh, I noticed, uh, under Pelican Reserve, are you guys setting over there in excess of four million dollars in reserves?
Yes.
And we only have one point nine million.
We've been doing this for years then. I mean, early on, Pelican said, the PIPAC committee, that WCI funded nothing in the future. This was when we were about seven, eight hundred homes. And we said, we know we're gonna need funds. We didn't know what for and we had a cursory study back then. And we didn't meet the threshold of what that study said we should have. But the driving force was twofold. If we knew we needed money, number one. But the more important thing that drove us, at least drove me as a voting member, was now we'll be getting into WCI's pocket for all the unapproved lots. So that's why we drove, that's why I supported funding at the level we were.
So your people are seeing the benefit of that.
Now.
They're seeing the benefit now.
Yes.
Yeah, so the ones that died earlier, just say thank you and send them a Christmas card.
Well, you know.
Christmas card.
But that.
Holiday card.
Holiday.
Holiday card.
It was a really a stark slap in the face to realize we were living in a community where there were no capital reserves. I'd never done that before. And of course, I understand why.
Number and I thought, wow.
Yeah.
That's impressive.
Well, and that's why we had the million dollars for the boardwalk and we didn't have to do a special assessment. We had the money.
Is there anything else for Pelican for Alex?
I don't have anything else. I don't know if Carol's got any.
So go ahead with Stony Brook then.
Well, before we leave that, can I just recognize Mr. Beasy, he's here, if he, or Pelican, it didn't, and I know you've looked at the study.
Okay, if you're, yeah.
If that's okay, madam chair.
The whole audience.
Yes.
See, I did that this time?
Yes.
Phil Measy, Phil Measy, Pelican Preserve, um, there were just th- two or three things that I didn't know whether they were included or should be included. The wall on tree line, which we're working on now.
And that is not a gateway asset.
That's not.
So that's why that, yeah, that was a good question. Right now, that is not included cuz it's not.
It's not a gateway.
This is a gateway asset report.
How about the chain link fence?
Round the property. That's not gateway either.
That's not gateway either, okay. And you covered the asphalt round the.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna assume that their quantities are correct like it.
Yeah.
I haven't tried to get scoop it out.
Okay, and included the bridges. I was concerned about that, yeah.
So before we move to actually Stony Brook, does staff on staff, did you guys work only on the general, right? Only on Gateway? The one that you emailed, the one that was in the last workshop?
Correct, we, but we put like the general items that we knew of, that we had GSCD assets in there, streetlights, the boardwalk.
That is not here, that's my question.
Correct.
Okay, alright.
And just a general concern, and that is that the study that we did about four years ago, the, the numbers are a lot higher. And I'm concerned about.
I can't find that report, but I agree with you.
Yes.
The numbers we were looking at were considerably higher than.
Substantially higher, yeah, there were double.
And I don't know that we was as focused on gateway assets only then. We were taking a broader view of PIPAC cuz it was still in the developer. And I'd hate to tell you, but that four years was really about eight years ago.
This is only.
Time gets by. Yes, that's correct.
Right, I understood.
And I don't know that we.
Well, i- i- you know, it, it appears, it's hard, I, because you, I, we, we are not always dealing with, um, um, apples and oranges, but the, it appears that the reason where there is such a difference, if you could do a comparison, is because we took, and I think it was mentioned a little earlier in this meeting, we took a more expensive. In other words, we're, the cost of doing the work, ours was considerably higher than the costs that are shown in, in, in this study. I think that's what promoted it.
I remember where that study came. I remember we had it.
Yes.
And we got it very inexpensively. I think a resident volunteered.
Well, well, yeah, it wa- it was done by Jack Richards who.
I, I didn't remember who did it.
Yeah.
But yeah, his numbers were considerably higher.
They were considerably higher. His were much more conservative. I think mainly in terms of how much it was gonna cost us to make do the replacements or do the work.
Yeah.
When it finally came up. Um, and is there a possibility, uh, and, and I guess it goes to some of the earlier questions, can you put a contingency in these things? I guess it doesn't matter because we could, we don't have to use these numbers anyway, so we could put the contingency in, I guess, on our own. But, um.
But what I.
And I think that's what we'll have to do eventually when we take a look what staff has worked on as well. And so I think we'll be, between what staff has, what Alex provided and what we think it is, I think it'll be a combination of all of those to try to get what we think is the best number. I think that's my.
Well, some of those things are going to have a lot, a lot more flexibility for high cost being off. Paving, for example.
Yes.
You may wanna have a higher contingency for it than you might for something like street signs. We know street signs are gonna be twelve, fifteen hundred bucks, period.
Yeah.
So you, you, that could vary.
For, for instance, looking at what we're doing in Avila may have an impact on.
That cost is greatly exceeded what we thought it was gonna be.
It was gonna be. Was gonna be.
Yeah, well, and that's, that's what we did from the staff perspective, is we tried to take actual projects that have been done in the last year and. Multiply that out. And so hopefully, once PPA weighs in on, um, all of the projects and any type of equipment that they want. To see as part of their capital reserve, we can go back, we can look at a villa, we know it's seventy-five, but we might get a better price break. So we wanna meet somewhere in the middle between sixty and seventy-five. So we can look at that once PPA determines their capital projects and we get the report from KW.
Thing for three to four years, and you project accurately for a three, four-year period. That's about as good. Because you're gonna always update it in a three, basically a three-year cycle anyway.
But the other part is the fact that the recommendation is to reduce the amount of capital reserve. I don't think there's an appetite in the Pelican Committee to reduce anything.
Well, where that comes in, in my opinion, where that comes into play, is these big ticket items that have long service lives. You're going to have to start planning for those costs way in advance, or otherwise you're gonna see a, a, a rate increase that's gonna be sticker shock.
See.
So you've gotta, you've got, you may not be looking at them right now, but you better know they're on the horizon.
Well, absolutely. And to that end, I mean, if we're currently, if we've been paying two hundred thousand for six years, and I'm sure it's at least that. Why would we wanna reduce it for a couple of years, knowing it's gonna go back up? Everybody's, everybody's comfortable with the two hundred thousand, keep it going. And then those future increases may be minimized or reduced, you know, correspond.
And we do have the comfort of having a substantial reserve to start with.
Yes.
Which makes a big difference.
It makes a big difference, yeah.
I think he felt. Uh, okay, so let's go ahead with.
Thank you.
Have we sent them the bill yet for the transfer of overage in their reserve to our account?
I think we forgot that last year.
Honest eighteen percent.
No, I think it's twenty now.
Is it? Oh, I'm sorry.
Twenty.
Oh, you're hurting me. Sat here all year to watch this tax ourselves and said nothing.
All right, Stony Brook.
I have one question to start. So the, the asphalt, I noticed, so our unit cost was point seventy, and then Stony Brook is one point seven zero. And I'm assuming that's because it's including the seal code applications. Okay, so I just wanna get clarification on this. Are we talking about seal coating or are we talking about what, what they did? On the asphalt, Chelsea, because.
What you'd say those two are different things.
Because they are, they are two different things. So seal coating is just that, or what I call paint, right? What they did last year, it's something that actually helps extend. It helps extend the life of the existing road, and it is not needed as frequent as seal coating will be. And if anything else, it would extend the life of the road. So then, to me, that one point seven here, it didn't necessarily make sense. And then I need a clarification if it was seal coating or asphalt rejuvenation. That's, that's the, the.
Well, if you take out the seventy, Flavia, which is common to both, you're left with a dollar. Uh, Alex, are you saying that seal coat application is a dollar a square yard?
Yes.
Okay, is that, like Flavia said, the aesthetic black painting? Or is that the structural with the sand and the other emulsions in it for a little bit more of a, uh. Uh, structural benefit?
Uh, no, yeah, so it is purely the paint application that makes it look black. That, that's all it is.
I was gonna say, because if you divide it by nine, that's about ten, twelve cents a square foot, and that's just about what the cost of the making it black is. That's about how cheap it is, about ten to twelve cents a, uh, square foot.
I guess I was unaware there are two products.
I, I, I will give clarification on this from Stony Brook.
Too big time.
I think because I don't think seal coating is much.
It's not worth it.
Yeah, I don't think that that's what it is, that.
This is, this is your budget, so if you want to put it back to point seven and not have the seal coating.
I'm not saying that. I'm saying if you're gonna do seal coat, do a seal coat that actually gets you three to five years of useful life. Painting it black. Remember, remember what, remember all, everybody, what happened at Pinecrest here? About, oh, eight, ten years ago, that community over there went and basically put the black aesthetic looking deal. Within, within a year, the road fell apart.
So that's, so that's what I'm saying. The price is actually not, like, trying to go, the price is not much different.
So let's not call it seal coating, let's call it.
So that's.
Let's call it.
You wanna call it road refurbishing or something?
Well, it's not, it's certainly not, it's certainly not mill and asphalt overlay, but it, it isn't aesthetic.
I've never heard anybody say it extends the engineering life. Everything's been aesthetic.
Yeah, and I lived in Pinecrest when that happened.
There are products out right now.
I'm unaware of that, I'll just leave it at that.
It's a limited company, and they usually do airports. They, they do it on runways.
Yes, they do it on runways. And they will tell you, if you do not do it every three to five years, get it, don't do it at all.
And if you didn't do it when it was initially resurfaced, well, within three years, you can't let it go forever.
Yep.
And Phil Meesey, just one other comment with regard to Pelican Preserve and that kind of work. We have had a lot of our neighborhoods, individual neighborhoods, take it upon themselves to do their own roads.
For aesthetics.
For aesthetics.
So they just blacken them.
They, they blacken them.
Anything here.
Yeah.
As long as they know that they're, it, it's purely an aesthetic deal.
They have to get approval from the district to do that.
Well, we've never had it in the past, but I'm not saying we shouldn't, but they've just done it on their own, every neighborhood. Mostly old Pelican, not so much new Pelican.
Right.
But they've been doing it for ten years.
So I don't, I don't have anything else, I guess, on Stony Brook. That's the only item.
Can you change the term seal coat to top coating or some, some, something like that?
Yeah, it'd be better.
Service restoration.
Yeah, so.
And then we'll be letting them know about the catch basins as well, because here's eighty-three for, eighty-three for Stony Brook, which is looking a little better, but I don't think.
I think Paparilla has done, or are, are doing the sign.
It is on, it is on, yeah, they are.
Yeah, so we're gonna, um, we'll, we'll confirm with that.
And then all the signs will be identified and street signs, stop signs, dog walk signs, all that. But we already have it for the catch patients. There is a document, I just don't have it.
Doug, did you have anything to add for, um, the Stony Brook?
I, I don't, not that I'm aware of.
Okay, thanks.
Do you know how many miles of road, uh, Alex, are in, uh, Stony Brook?
Uh, I, I would have to go into my numbers and divide it out. I can give you a rough idea though. Um.
Okay, I just took my community, which is basically double Stony Brook, and the square yardage, I come up. It's a little bit bigger. I come up to go coast eighty to eighty-five thousand square yards, i- if I were calculating Stony Brook, but that's purely a ratio. I, I just didn't know what roads you were including. Does this include Stony Brook on both sides of the road? Or does this not include, this doesn't include anything over the apartments?
Correct.
Nothing.
Nothing.
Correct.
Just our CDD stuff.
Privately owned, yep.
Okay.
All right, Alex, do, do you have anything else to add?
Uh, no, the, the one thing I wanted to say quickly, just to throw it in there to give our opinion in there on the seal code applications for this. Um, we, we're, we agree that it doesn't do anything structurally, um, even the rejuvenation. We're hesitant to, to think that that adds on any useful life to mill and overlayment. So just to let you know where we're coming from on that.
Okay, good deal.
That's consistent with every engineer I've talked to.
All right, so then, um, I'll touch base with, uh, some of the numbers for catch basins and then the roadways and things like that. And then, um, I'll get that to you here, hopefully tomorrow, and then, um, hopefully in the next week or two, you can get us back the final report. And, um, we can take that and go from there.
Okay, no problem. Thank you.
Thanks, Alex. Is there anybody else? Have a good day.
All right, thank you, guys. Bye.
All right, I need a motion to join them.
All right, so move.
All in favor? Hi.
Hi.
That we stood there?
Yeah, I think so.
Uh, yes. Hey, you guys, are you taking a break?
Yes.
Yeah, we're gonna, um, shut, are we gonna shut this one down and start a new one?
Okay, all right, I'll see you in the other.
Item on the next agenda about the need permission, because that'll be a new piece of anything. That communities need to get permission from the district to paint their roads, but I think I just heard, not that it should be a big deal, but. Put it in front of them, because it's historically.